We're recording.
Right, I now call to order the design review board special session via the Zoom meeting platform on June 23rd, 2021 at 5:30 PM for the city of Bisbee located in 76 Erie Street, Bisbee, Arizona 85603. Do a quick roll call, Mr. Gaffer?
Present.
Steven Green?
Yeah.
You have that Ponti?
Sorry, I'm here.
Scott Perfect?
Here.
Linda S.
Present.
Ben Lepley? Sean Young, present, and Mr. Davis is excused. Let me move right on to agenda item one, the discussion and possible recommendations to final draft of the design review board updated guidelines to be sent to the city attorney for review and once reviewed forwarded to the planning and zoning commission for the design review board on the guideline for guideline updates that we've been working on for the past year and a half. Just about, so what we'll do tonight is we're going to go around with each member, I'm just going to go down the call list, and each member, you know, please bring forward any additions, edits, comments, if we got any. And then at the end, if we're satisfied with it, we're all satisfied, we can take it to a vote to set off if we want to make that. Mr. Gaffer, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Sean. As you know, I did send a note to you and Naina with only one very minor comment in the actual existing text, which was on page 30, top left, article four, line, one I would delete the word storm before the word window, it didn't seem to be necessary. The other thing I had was a perennial issue that I've raised and been upset about with some of the very poor submittals we've had over the years. The range of quality of the submittals of applicants is from, from absolutely outstanding to appalling. And I know that Niner and staff and Joe do their best to weed out the bad ones. But infamous to Niner and other staff, they don't have the facility to go out in the field and look at every single applicant and make sure that it's competent based on the reality. Also, sometimes, and this happened last the last time, but I'm concerned that documented wishes of the design review board are actually followed through on and how if it's just documented in the motion, maybe it isn't adequate, I don't know, sometimes it is, maybe sometimes it isn't. There was one particular one last week where the, the last meeting where the applicant, and I'm not picking on any particular one, this happened regularly, the, the image that was presented was not accurate, it didn't represent either the proposed image of the property or the existing. And I don't think we should continue to do that. Accordingly, I was going to propose, and I am proposing that we add some text which allows the DRB to actually refuse to approve an application if, in our opinion, the application is insufficient. It doesn't exist at the moment, obviously, we could do it, but I think if we put the text in, it would flag to the applicants that we're serious about getting accurate proposals and documentation of what is to be done.
Mister?
I, the text, if you'd like, I will read it, yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Gaffer, I was going to say that we do have the review process in page 14, and I didn't know if you wanted to, if they approved that, if you wanted to add it as number 12, or if you wanted to put it as a different number.
Yeah. Um, if you think it's, I mean, again, this is only my suggestion, if you believe that this is adequately covered, then so be it. I certainly don't want to add text which is not necessary. I didn't see it written in the way that I wrote it, but if, if the, if the rest of the board feels that it's adequately covered, then I will withdraw, however, I want to put everybody on notice that I will not approve, I will not vote in favor of any application which I don't believe is properly documented.
I agree with you completely, I have no problem with adding it, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Yeah, I have a comment on, on this one for, when I first joined the DRB, I was, I was pretty nitpicky about that same issue, but then after some time, I realized that occasionally we'll have somebody draw directly on printed out photograph of a house, whether usually it's like fence or something. And at first it was like, man, that is just so ugly or whatever, and then I realized, well, you know, they don't have the budget to, to get drafting software or whatever, and that I, I kind of feel that specific technique, it's done nicely, it's acceptable in my point of view, especially if it's a really cheap, small job. They draw directly on, on a printed out photo, but, but generally, there's been a lot of applications that are just, I don't know, like, they just print out the testers map, like, I don't know which, which one is, like, which addresses is 805D, it could be way up the staircase, I don't have no, no way of finding it, can't tell because the parcel number is on there, not the address. So, I don't know, it's, it's just a discussion point, not really a motion or anything, so.
I, I agree with you, Ben, also that I think it's a judgment call, I agree, if someone is just maybe replacing a door and it's virtually like for like, then maybe a catalog cut and a sketch on a, a sketched, a mock-up photograph, I think is adequate, I don't think we, I think there is the judgment that we make as to whether it's adequate or not, does it tell a story? Does it convey down the road what the, what we wanted? And I think, you know, and I know of applications that just don't tell a story. We sort of know during the discussion, but, and, but there's no control down the road as to what we agreed on and so forth.
Yes, Mr. Perfect?
Oh, you're muted.
You're muted, Scott?
Sorry, there was one, the last meeting that was, and I think this probably falls more under the the specifications that Peter's looking at or referring to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but we had one where there were windows to be put in, but there were no windows specified, there were doors to be put in, but no doors were specified. It just kind of left a lot of things open as far as what was going to be done to complete that project. But, but yet it, but yet it, it, it was something that we discussed and, and voted on, and I'm not sure that that was, I'm not sure that that had the correct amount of information that we needed to make a proper decision.
I was going to say, on that particular application, if you look at your last packet, it was supposed to just be about the demo, and somehow the windows and the doors got brought up, even though on the agenda, it was only supposed to be about the demo of that addition. So, I'm not sure how it got off onto the topic of the windows and doors, but I specifically said on the app agenda just for the demo. So, and I, I do agree that it could be better sometimes, but sometimes the staff just doesn't have a chance to chase all that down.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask a question to Naina? When we do go into, for instance, the windows and so forth that we did, is that binding?
Well, I can't remember what it was, but whoever made the motion included the windows and the doors, so yes.
Yeah. Agenda, though, it would, it probably wouldn't be binding, would it, Naina?
Probably not, because that was not what the agenda item was for, so we can make him come back for the doors and the windows.
Is that something that would be stated at the meeting right at that point, or is that something that we could follow up on a later date?
That I don't know.
Stated at the meeting.
Yeah, it should have been stated at the meeting, but I specifically asked if you were approving the windows and the doors, and I can't remember who made the motion and they included them, and I mean, I don't, I think Joe's right, I don't think it's binding, but I knew that there was no windows or doors because I had asked him, Joe had asked him, and I had asked him to send pictures, and he had not, and he wanted just to go on with the demo instead.
But I really don't think we should be discussing this right now either.
No, you're right.
I have a question on that, Naina, for you, when they go in and just do for the, you know, the demo, do then, they have to come back and, and resubmit for the windows and the doors? Does that typically be done?
It could be done, yes.
Okay, and then I'm in agreement with Mr. Gaffer, I think that we do see a lot of incomplete applications, and it's a little deceiving, and then, but once we go out and look at the site, then obviously it's a lot clearer, but I, I agree that there should be some sort of verbiage in there.
So, on that, if you agree with the verbiage, if you look at page 14, if you will let me know where you want to add it into, do you want it to be number 12 in the review process, or do you want it to be somewhere in the mix of one through 11?
No, I think if it was number 12 at the end, it's kind of a defining statement for that review process.
Okay.
And it puts everybody on a clear page as to what we're looking for. Because oftentimes, when you're reading, you, you know, you read the first part, you kind of brush over the middle, and the last part is, you know, you hit the last part, so if you can put that at the end, that's just my opinion.
If I could comment, Sean, actually, I don't agree, the thing is that if we put it as the last item, it's after the building official shall ensure that all matters, I think in sequence, it should be earlier on. That's why I said in my email that it should be maybe item seven, or, or maybe eight.
So, should, would it go behind number six and make number seven that's already there, number eight? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I was proposing, and just because of the sequence of events. It gives us a shot at saying, actually, and, and you know, again, I want to underscore, this is not a criticism of staff whatsoever.
Oh, yes.
We have a lot more opportunity to go out, plus, when we're in our meetings, we debate, we, we throw in ideas, and this happened at the last meeting, we, we changed ideas for a particular item, again, I'm not going to point to any particular application, but I am concerned that if we don't properly document it, then the building inspector doesn't have prior knowing what our intention was, and I think that's not reasonable for, for us to do that.
If I can come in there, I think one of the other things we should possibly look at, and it's outside the scope of tonight's meeting, but the checklist that's on the actual application should clearly state what the minimum requirements for every applicant is. Like, the tax parcel number is missing a lot of the time. You know, clearly, you can't pull it up on the county maps without that, which would make it easier to find a place too. So, the checklist on the application, if we can maybe make that a future agenda item. So, the checklist actually has something of substance for staff to actually say, oh, you've left out this, we need that, that's a minimum requirement item.
I agree, all right, thanks, Mr. Green. All right, do we have any other, is everybody okay with the verbiage that Mr. Gaffer's proposed for that number seven or number eight, wherever it fixes in the mix?
I, I think it's good.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me, but does it use the word incomplete applications?
Um, I can read it if you want me to.
If you want to, but it's quite long.
Um, no, his, his little paragraph is pretty short, it says, "If during its review, the DRB determines that an applicant's medal does not accurately, sufficiently, or definitively document the work proposed in the application, the DRB may deny the application. The DRB may elect to defer its decision until such time the applicant has furnished satisfactory, satisfactory documentation. Further, if during the discussion of the application, the DRB meeting significant changes to the original application are agreed to by the board and applicant, such changes must be adequately described in a motion and to be passed by the board. If such changes cannot be adequately described in a motion, the applicant must provide an amended submitted to the DRB prior to the approval of the application." Which I think is good, because one of, one of the things that I realized after the last meeting is that one of my jobs is while we're doing, while we're in our session, I have got to make sure that I'm listening to each of your recommendations that you want on there, so that the, when the motion is made, that that is specifically outlined in that motion, because our motions are what are critical, because that's what our vote stems from. And if that motion is off, and we run a vote, then we could miss something. So, we've got, you know, we've got the applicant's end, and we've also got our side, which is making sure that those motions are correct, and that is, that does squarely fall on me.
And just speaking from the last meeting, when there's an incomplete application and then the applicant completely changes, I think somehow we need to table that, because I know in the last meeting, Mr. Gaffer was trying to talk about the carport, I don't know, that, like, you got like one second on that, and so we didn't really discuss the carport, and I'm a little concerned about quick motions. So, just, you know, just an overall thing, if it's too quick of a motion, and then obviously, once somebody puts a motion out there, then if somebody jumps in and second motions it, then there was no discussion, so somehow allow each person to say something. And it would make it a little longer, which would be kind of a lot, but.
I, I definitely hear you, and I, I definitely respect that. It's, I don't get to control the flow of the motions. When I say it's over to you guys to discuss, and it goes through, and everybody's had their discussion, and nobody says anything, and somebody makes a, a motion, at that point, I have no control over that, it has to go.
Sean, if we could get back to the agenda item.
Yep, and so we got to get back to the agenda item, that's something else that we'll discuss. All right, Mr. Gaffer, do you have anything else?
No, and, and, and thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Green?
Okay, thank you, I've made my comment about Mr. Gaffer's suggestions, and I'm wholeheartedly behind supporting his suggestion and the verbiage that he provided. I have no other changes that I've recognized in the document, because I did that the last special meeting we had. So, at this point in time, we'll pass it on to the next board member.
All right, Ms. Ponty?
Good evening, everyone, I did not submit any changes to Naina, however, this evening, two things really jumped out at me, and I, I think if it is an agreement by the other board members, and I know here's some food for thought, I think there would be fairly simple edits. The first one, if you would notice, on the cover, we have changed the name to the design standards. So, right there on the very colorful front page or the cover, it says development standards, whereas the previous document were, the word used was guidelines. And so, I'm, I'm, I don't know necessarily why we changed it to standards from guidelines, I think guidelines is a little more relaxed, a little less authoritarian, and a little more open-minded, as opposed to the word standards, so that would just be one thought. You know, I know that we may have to take a vote on that to get that changed, if others are in agreement of that. And then the other piece that I've, I've discussed several times and never really got anywhere with is at the very end of the document, before we get to the glossary, if everybody goes to page, I think it's like 30, well, let's see, go to the end, here we go, when we get to page 40, there's just no closing, and it, it seems like before we get to the glossary or after the glossary, somewhere in there, rather than just ending on efficient irrigation systems, I think before we ended on something about lighting, but now we're ending on efficient irrigation systems, and there's just not a closing statement. And one of the most beautiful aspects, I think, of the prior version was actually, let me pull it up, was, again, it was at the end of the book, and I'm going to just pull it up here from the old version right now, and it was called the, A Special Message, and it was very heartfelt message that kind of wrapped everything up, and it was on one of the last pages before the applicant would fill out the checklist, and it says, "A special message, buildings and structures in historic districts should be recognized as a product of their own period of time. Historic districts do not appear overnight, but they can be slowly destroyed one piece at a time. An original brick face is painted over, an intricate cornice is removed, a sinus hung or painted in an elegant transom window. These are just some of the examples on how historic districts are slowly destroyed and how they can disappear. The design review board and city staff cannot preserve Bisbee's historic districts by themselves, they need the help of every property and business owner in order to preserve Bisbee's unique and historical character. Let us all continue to work together," and then it has the dates of, of update, that's on page 35 of the old guidelines. And I think that it's just very effective at pulling us all together as a town with one mission, as opposed to a property owner with an idea, and an authoritative board that's going to maybe turn down that idea. It reminds everybody that we're kind of all in this together and working together towards a common goal, and I think that this design guideline book, the new one is kind of missing that piece, and that would be a perfect closing if we just took it from the old book and put it on the last page, and it kind of wraps everything up. So, those would be my only, my only two changes to the existing document, thank you for listening, everybody.
I couldn't agree more, I don't know, if anybody else wants to comment?
I, the, the last thing you that mentioned, I totally agree with.
I certainly agree with the, the special message, I think it's a brilliant idea. I wonder how we drifted into development standards rather than what the old documents said, design guidelines? I don't know what the genesis of that was, if anybody can shed a light on it, was there a particular reason why we changed the wording for the title?
I don't know the particular reason, I just know that the TCP group who did it, that's what they had named the, the document that we used as the template to do this one, that's what they had called it, so it doesn't matter, we can change that back to guidelines.
Is, is that a, is that going to be a problem, because is it referenced throughout as being? Is it going to conflict with a lot of references to the document throughout the rest of the?
Well, I can go in and everywhere it talks about the development standards, I can change it to guidelines.
Which, if it doesn't create a lot of work, I, I think that's a suggestion is very good, that's just my opinion.
Anybody else?
As far as whether we're in agreement or not, I'm in agreement with what Evette said.
Okay.
I'm in, I'm in agreement as well, I, I like the word guidelines better than, than standards.
Okay.
And just for clarification on both items that Evette brought up.
All right.
Agreement.
So, Naina, can we go ahead and add that? Mr. Perfect, going to turn it over to you, I'm going to step away for a second, I've got a contact that is not agreeing with me, Mr. Perfect, if you can, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to start with that I'm in full support of Peter Gaffer's suggestion to put that, that paragraph in, and, and the placement of it as well, thank you, Peter, for, for writing that as, as, and I don't want to use a flowery word like eloquently, but I think you did a really good job on it. I'm in support of the two proposals or two suggestions that Evette Fonte had made as well. Now, I just learned within this past week that this, this project in itself has been going on for two years, is that correct?
It's been an awful long time.
Okay.
Yes, it's been muted for even longer than that, it's, I can't remember when we first took a stab at it, but I, Ben, you might be able to remember, because I think you were on the board, but it was, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess my, my point is, is that I sat on the board for, for such a short time, and there's been a lot of hard work done by the prior board members, other than myself. I just want to say that I respect that, and it's obvious that there has been a lot of hard work in this, and I would, I just want to say I respect that hard work. I don't, I am not going to delve into nitpicking from the point that it's at right now, and I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the rest of my colleagues as far as making points on that. So, I'm good with it. As is so far.
Linda S.
I'm getting your break today, Sean, thanks for reading. Only thing that, that I did notice, and I don't know exactly where it is, and Naina, I apologize, I didn't send this out to you, it was just one thing where we talked about neighborhoods, but it's really the district, so maybe we can match up with, I think it's planning and zoning that calls it district versus neighborhood. And I can look to see where the neighborhood is.
Oh, so you want to change it from, from saying district to neighborhood?
No, the other way around, from neighborhood, because it says neighborhood now, but it's really the district.
Okay, so neighborhood to district.
Right, I'd like to ask Joel about that, yeah.
Would that be the historic district? Historic district? Okay.
Instead of historic neighborhood.
Sure.
Thank you. That's it.
Linda, you'll let me know where those are?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Lepley?
Yeah, I had, I had made a comment on page 22, I can see it's in green window proportion. And the comment was windows should be narrow and tall, if that follows the original design of the building, so I can see it was changed. I just, the only thing I changed was if it follows the original design of the building, whatnot, so this is, in my mind, this is in the case which actually is happening a lot more often nowadays, which is really great, in the case that somebody is taking out sliders and storing In the case that somebody is taking out sliders and storing old window proportions that were once there. Or we've had a lot of applicants kind of making or trying to make their, the windows of the building more uniform. And taking out nineteen-seventies and eighties sliders and aluminum. I think that might help, but at the same time not be so stringent for people building new buildings or additions that the mandate of only having vertically, vertical portion of windows. That mandate was a bit too strict. So it was just that change. I've been looking at this document for years, so I'm, I'm happy to just let it go into the, the action. Those were my mumbles.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody have any comments? All right. I'm going to pass on comments myself this evening. I'm extremely under the weather. I've been down with the sinus infection for a few days, so I'm not exactly focused yet, Nina.
Ben, I did have another question about one of the things you said you disagreed with, the removal of the, where I took out except for mid-century modern. I didn't know what quite, did you want that to go back in? Or did you, I wasn't quite sure what the?
Well, there's not very many. But there are some mid-century modern buildings or additions to buildings. And actually, one came up to the board for review about a year ago. And so I think referencing mid-century modern as being, you know, a style in old Bisbee is a thing. The convention center is not quite mid-century, but it is a form of modernism. So and that's, that's a profound building in Bisbee. So, you know, I, I don't think reference to modern or mid-century modern should be removed or discouraged as such, as modernism has gone back since the nineteen twenties, in the teens.
I don't, I don't disagree. But I also, I also wonder if this is giving an opening to people to continue to try and select sliders because of that verbiage where it's not applicable. It's, I, it's just, it's just another way to look at it. I'm not saying either way is right or wrong. In fact, I don't know what's right or wrong in this area. I just know that one of the things that we continue to face with these window guidelines is people continue to try to put in the sliders. So if we add that in, does that open that up? If we leave it out, does it contour? Just thoughts.
I think it goes back to the discussion of, well, if it's an existing building, is that building mid-century modern or not? If not, and you know, mid-century glass is not going to go very well in there. So the DRB board members need to be cognizant of that. And explain it to the applicant. So, but if it is mid-century, then modern, then somebody is putting a frameless window in it. And actually, that's for windows to go in. So that's kind of how it is. We just need, we just need to be cognizant of the style of the building as, as board members. I mean, maybe we can take, completely take out any reference to, to mid-century modern altogether. And, and that might actually solve your concern.
I, you know, I'm just looking at more from a perspective of what it makes it, what makes it easier for us as a board to work with, with applicants on. That's, that's more of my perspective that after almost two years of the board. Man, sliders are the biggest, one of the biggest issues we face. And it doesn't matter whether it's, you know, it doesn't matter if it's just an applicant that comes in representing themselves or if it's one of the contractors, you know, there's a couple contractors in the town that continually try to use them. So I'm just trying to wonder if there's a way we can curb that.
So do we leave it like?
Comments?
Or does anybody else have any suggestions?
Ben, you make, Ben, you make the call. You want to, do you want to leave it as is? Do you want it, do you want it in there? Do you?
Linda has.
Yeah.
Quick question for clarification from Ben. Ben, are you talking about like a picture window, just a fixed piece of glass? Or are you just talking about matching whatever else is in the building or around the building? Because sometimes we can do it, but sometimes we can't. So it's all going to depend on their application.
Yeah.
Kind of what you're talking about, Sean.
Yeah, kind of.
Review it as it comes up.
Yeah, review it as it comes up. Do we have to put it in there? Or, I mean, obviously, I think is, I don't know, for me, I mean, as members, we, when we go out to our house, we're not, you know, we know what the style of a building is. Do we need to spell that out in there? Because a lot of times applicants don't know what mid-century modern is and what. But I don't know. I could be completely wrong.
I mean, for example, there was somebody, actually, he totally avoided the DRB. But they had an old miner shack above high, high center market. And, you know, on, on the, on the west side of it, they just cut a gigantic hole and, and then put a big picture window. Like a mid-century modern, like single pane of glass. And that, that is an abuse of, of that, right? Obviously, they, they totally avoided the DRB somehow, but that was a couple of years ago. But, you know, we want to avoid them arguing that, oh, this miner shack needs a mid-century modern window in it, right? So the language has to be, you know, it's mid-century modern house. Or you're building a new building that's mid-century modern style that should be allowable consistent with the, with the design.
Maybe something that says style must reflect the building, you know, criteria or something, you know, but the style versus writing, just the word modern scares me because everybody has, it's all about interpretation.
It is a very problematic word.
I think Joe wanted to say something.
Yeah, Joe.
I do, I think that the windows are one of the most contentious issues or that, that come up and they keep coming up and they've been coming up as long as I've been associated here, which is seven and a half years. And, and it will be always. And I think the, the narrower we can box it in, you're probably, it's probably going to pay off in the long run. And to where even sometimes there's, there's members that are on the board that are still getting educated when they come on and they, and it's hard, it's hard to be tough. But protecting the, the district is, is the role here. And I think that by narrowing the interpretation, it's, it'll be helpful to the applicants as well as the board. In my opinion.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm direct, I'm in favor with what Linda said. The word modern probably scares me more than anything. Cause when, you know, someone can see the word modern and they can think of anything modern. And not necessarily look at what needs to be, what materials need to be used. So what do we want to do with that language then?
I had already taken it out, so it's not there anymore.
I'm okay with it out, it being there, but if
Okay.
if somebody else disagrees.
I'm, I'm fine.
Joe, for your, for you reviewing, what would be easier for you as far as the verbiage on that? Because if, if you want to narrow it down, what would help you?
Well, just as far as, like we talked about the, the slider windows and, and then sometimes the awnings and such are available. But just today, we were, there was, there was an issue that was going on with somebody wanting to put windows in and not understanding how it goes together. But they always want, they always want to push the envelope is my point. And where if we can, if we can narrow it down to where they understand that, that we want, we would, you know, and of course, like Ben said earlier, I believe, what he was referring to was like when they take out a slider has been put in, you take it out and you, and you're never going to have a, a, a opening that is taller than it is wide. But you deal, we deal with those things with, with, with mold windows and such in those, in those instances. But just to try to, just to try to make it so that they're not trying to always press the envelope and say, well, I'm, this is what I want to put in. And it's, it's very often because it's cheaper.
I'm okay with what's in there and what's in green. Do we? Ben, I mean, do we need to, do we need to vote on it? If we need to vote on it, I have no problem.
I think what Nina did of taking it out. I think that's fine because if something comes up that happens to be, you know, mid-century modern or whatever, which is pretty rare, or somebody's designing something that's actually really nice. Goes with the design, then I think we could discuss it when the pen comes and just, you know, put our designing, designer hats on. See if the style, you know, matches.
I, I'm cool with that. Is everybody cool? Everybody good?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Um, all right, that's everybody. Quick question for all of you. We've got a couple of options that we can do. We can take this to vote tonight with the changes that have been mentioned tonight and just have Nina and vote to have that sent to the city attorney. And then on to planning and zoning. Or we can have the changes made and redo it again and then make a vote. I open that up for discussion and if you want to make a motion one way or the other, it's more than acceptable. Yes.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll, I'll take a stab. I'd be certainly happy to make a motion to move this forward. And certainly I know that Nina will reflect everything that we've discussed tonight. I have no issues whatsoever. So that's my opinion. If you would like me to make a motion after everybody else has pitched in, that'd be fine.
Yes.
I, I have the same opinion that Peter does. I, the things that we have discussed tonight and the changes we have discussed tonight, I do not have a problem with, with Nina making those changes and passing it as is with those changes.
When you go to make the motion, you can just take what I said in the agenda item. Just put, I moved to send the final draft and all of those words. And then at the end to include the recommendations or to include the changes that were requested.
Okay. It seems like it's pretty fair, Mr. Gaffer, if you'd like to make the motion per the instructions of Nina, then you, it's, go ahead.
Okay, then I will make a motion on agenda right to number one to send the final version of the updated guidelines to the city attorney for review, once reviewed forward to planning and zoning commission. And include the changes as requested and discussed at this meeting of June twenty-third.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Perfect, are you the one that seconded it?
I did not.
It was Mr. Green. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, that's a historic maneuver. All right, moving on, moving on to agenda, item number two. Review and discussion regarding holding a special session. Did everybody have a chance to review the? The, sorry, I'm scrolling to it real quick. Did everybody have a chance to read the city of Bisbee city code for the organization, the functions and purposes and the limitation of power and the board new commissions and committees of the city of Bisbee? And the provisions that we operate under?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about special sessions that was not clarified in the provision that were provided?
Yeah, I, I've got a question and that's what makes a special meeting? Special meetings shouldn't be held on a regular basis. And it seems just lately we've had fairly regular special meetings. And so I think what we're supposed to do is avoid the special meetings because they're extraneous. And the regular meetings or scheduled meetings are the ones that everybody expects every thirty days. The circumstances are such that they warrant a special meeting, then we shouldn't be having them.
Right. Basically what it comes down to. Yeah. Basically what it is, like the DRB guideline updates has required a special session because it is a specific topic and item that is so large, we can't do it with our regular meetings. That is why we've had the special questions for that. And so that is what a special meeting is for. It's a particular, a meeting with a particular purpose that's been laid forward and set out. So just a reminder to everybody, as we're, as we're reviewing applications, we only have four options when we have an application before a set meeting. One, we can approve the application based on the design presented as it is. Two, we can approve the application with amendments. Three, we can deny the application. Or four, we can table it to our next regular session. Those are only four options in a meeting for an application. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I have a comment and it's back to the first thing we talked about where if they're incomplete applications, maybe we should be a little bit more sensitive, sensitive about requesting a better application instead of just jumping in and approving something. I think that would definitely curtail the desire to have that extra meeting.
And, yeah. And once again, that comes down to how you want to make your motions. Each board member has the ability to make a motion. And that emotion is, you know, if you want to table it for thirty days to make sure you've got the correct information, then make that motion. And if the board votes on it and agrees, then that's what happens. If it dies without a lack of a second or And if the board votes on it and agrees, then that's what happens. If it dies without a lack of a second, or it dies because it didn't pass a vote, then, you know, it proceeds out.
Agreed, and that's why I said maybe we just need to be a little more cognizant of having applications that are incomplete. So that's all, just, you know, think about it. It's always going to be, you know, moving target if there's new members and, you know, that whole just learning the different facets of of what we do. Keep in mind, that's all I'm saying.
Yep. And, you know, that's why each person definitely gets a chance to speak. And then it goes to, and then I always ask for, I'll take a motion. Because that way, everybody has an ability to lay out what they see. And, you know, if it sits dead silent and somebody try it, and then finally makes a motion. And you've got reservations, you know, make your motion beforehand, move forward with it. Don't be afraid. It's okay. Are we good on agenda item two? All right, moving along, agenda item three, review and discussion regarding science and murals. Honestly, I'm so under the weather, and it's been so long since we this got brought up. I believe, Linda, you were the one asked for this to be brought forward. So I was wondering maybe if you could go through and let us all go. Yeah, was it you or?
No, we we had talked about signs, but nothing about murals. I think the murals, the only issue we had was with the Lord or Justin and they actually were sent back to the city council to try to work out all the graffiti. I think the only issue was in signs.
Oh, okay, then that was my mistake. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I don't. I didn't have. I think it's pretty clear. I know I read this, and I thought, I wonder what we're discussing.
I couldn't remember.
At one point in a meeting.
No, it was it was signs. I was talking about signs at that point, you know, those those are administrative versus
Okay, okay.
And I just I I took a little caption. I know that it says that an administrator may approve those upon approval of all board members. So I just want to leave with that.
I
Yes, go ahead.
I do have a question. The the discussion regard regarding signs slash murals. Are those two being lumped into one category now?
No, what I did is I just made them one item.
Okay.
Because I I could have sworn I heard murals, so I must have been hearing things, so it should have just been signs.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Sorry about that.
You did all that work, but I'm glad we're past it.
So are we all good on agenda item three then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Before Nina, I noticed we didn't have a place for staff comments tonight. I didn't know if you wanted to take a second if you had.
No, I don't have any. Joe, do you have anything?
No. Um. And then I also noticed we didn't have a future agenda items. I just wanted to make sure that
I wrote down the ones that you wanted, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we got that on there. And then is it? Have we got any response from Fifty Main Street yet on the mural that was painted on the building, the front of the building?
Um. I think. Joe, do you have anything on that?
I don't think we probably should be talking about it.
That's true.
Yeah, I know if we could put it down. Okay, if we can put it on the next agenda.
All right.
Anybody else?
I don't know. Joe's keeping it straight tonight, I tell you. I must be tired.
I'm I'm what? Yeah, not watching. All right. Well, on that, I would love to adjourn. I think if somebody would like to make a motion. Yes, Linda.
I'd like to make a motion during this meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
Thank you very much.